All right, we'll get started here. This is the Thursday, September 5th, 2024 Wasika School Board Work Session. It is 5:30 and we're in the central building, second floor conference room. We have three items tonight for our work session. We'll turn it over to Dr. Hudson.
Well, good evening. As we get through the end of the first week of school, we have lots to talk about tonight in terms of just kind of some, how the year started, some things that went well, some things that we wish would go better, and that's kind of how the start of every school year goes. But to start our staff spotlight tonight, we wanted to highlight Brooke McGuire, our Director of Teaching and Learning here this evening, and have her talk a little bit with you about some of the PD the staff is doing over the summer, some of the things that work has happened. You know, I think the, some of one of the ways education has changed much over the last several years is, yes, it's a much more flexible summer schedule, but our staff's doing a lot of work in the summer to get ready for each school year. We're working through that, and a big part of that is Dr. McGuire, her work is leading our teaching learning department. As you can see from, you know, from how we continue to make progress in students' graduation rates and GPAs and all the things that are doing well, a big part of her work is contributing to that. And I know that, you know, when I talk to our staff, particularly when it comes to, and Brooke, I know you might talk about this a little bit, but when you talk specifically about the REED Act and some of the legislative changes that we've been required to make in the last few years, and we will, our staff is, not without stress, I don't mean to paint too rosy of a picture, but they certainly appreciate and understand the place that Wasika is in compared to some of our neighbors and some of our colleagues. And a big part of that is because of Brooke's work. So she's going to share with you a little bit about what's happening in her department and see what questions you may have, and then we'll move on to the next thing.
Thanks. So like Dr. Hudson said, and if any of you are in the buildings during the summer, you know there's always things going on, whether it's summer school and credit recovery, or teachers just working in their rooms or curriculum writing. And so they're continually busy doing things, whether it's specific to their content area or just other professional development. It started with the MEP Summer Institute in June, right away, and we work with some other districts in the area, along with MSU Mankato to put on that institute. Prior to this last summer, the last prior, three years prior, it was in Wasika, so we hosted it here. But typically, we try to rotate it to different districts each year, and so that was in Owatonna this past summer. And so we had about 20 staff members attend, teachers and paraprofessionals attend that there. And then, like I said, just working on curriculum writing and different professional development opportunities. Typically, at the beginning of the summer, I share different options because it tends to be really personalized. So there are different things for social studies teachers or math teachers. And so they're kind of doing things that are specific either to their grade level or content area. And then it was, like Dr. Hudson mentioned, the literacy training, it was really busy this summer too with, we have several different cohorts happening just because of the length of the training. And then also, as we add on new staff, we're starting some new cohorts there. And so we not only have letters and core are the two training programs that we're doing, we also are training some facilitators in each of those two so that we can run local cohorts as opposed to having them join public cohorts. We can kind of tailor those schedules to align with our professional days. We also had letters for early childhood happen this summer, and so that was an addition, adding on the preschool grades to that. In terms of getting into the school year, then we'll continue with that literacy training. And like I said, in the process of getting another cohort set up for those new staff members. And then we also are partnering with the Regional Education Laboratory, which they're working on some evidence-based practices in terms of identifying student needs, particularly at the junior high level. But we're doing it 712, where they look at a combination of attendance and behavior and a belonging survey. And so that's one piece that we've done in different ways in that building, but having some consistency and greater frequency with which those measures are taken. And then the problem-solving team there will be looking at some of that information. And so we started that training mid-August for just that problem-solving team. And then we'll continue that in the school year. That entire building will have professional development in the area of culturally responsive practices. And so that, the culturally responsive piece was a big focus last year, and that will continue. I would say most of our PD is kind of focused around four key areas. It's either the culturally responsive piece, high-impact teaching strategies, we call them, just the evidence-based practices, social and emotional learning, or partnerships and how we're working with different organizations in our community, or even just the collaboration and working internally as well. And then as we work through and start, was just meeting with the principals this afternoon and talking about the October Professional Day. It's really hard to answer what happens on the professional days because I think it's become so personalized to what people need, and so there's a lot of different things happening. So it really depends on the person and which building they're at. But we're looking at, right now, having conversations, like we were talking about the new panel modules, providing technology training, has been a big conversation. And then, yeah, like I said, that culturally responsive training will happen for half the district on that October day. So that's, those are some of the things we kind of look out as we plan the remaining professional days too.
Do you want to talk a little bit about our wading into the Minnesota MTSS?
Oh, absolutely, yes. So we'll start our MTSS process at a leadership level and look at our building principals, Director of Special Education, Dr. Hudson and myself, will look at, it's more so of an evaluation of our MTSS process, multi-tier systems of support. And we already have that really well established at each site, but haven't had as many conversations at a district level. So what kind of, we will look and kind of evaluate where we're at, what our strengths are, areas that we could improve, and that's what we'll be working on with that group of people throughout the year. We meet about monthly, if not more than that, to kind of work through that process this year, and then determine what our next steps will be from there. And that's through MBE.
And just one more, before we open up the questions, one more opportunity to toot your horn a little bit. Our training for REED Act and literacy work was largely paid for with a grant that you, how much, will you remind us how much that grant was for?
I need to keep track of all the different ones. It's broken up into different groups. So, and the early childhood was a late add, so all of those added together probably in the neighborhood of $350,000 to $400,000.
Right, it's pretty significant. And that was something you just saw the opportunity to take and was, because not everybody had that, was able to receive that grant, correct?
Yeah, no, I don't know that many people knew about it, and I didn't know the likelihood of getting it. But yeah, took a chance at writing the application and was fortunate enough to get that. And so that's really helped with both paying for the training itself, but then compensating teachers fairly for completing it because it is a, it's a substantial time commitment for them to do that, so.
Questions?
I have a question. I think last year, as part of the professional growth and development, I remember hearing that the letters and core training sometimes would, the teachers were able to do that during some of the professional growth and development days, which is good.
Right.
But then they maybe didn't have opportunities for the other parts. Do you think that will continue through this year? Or how long will the core and the letters training go before it's less people impacted or less? I guess, it still seems like that's a pretty core thing that's happening.
Correct. So, yes, the professional days, no question, have been a blessing for that just because we've been able to strategically plan some of those sessions. And taking that feedback from last year also, typically, the letters live sessions, there are three different components to those trainings. There's the like asynchronous online work, reading, and then live sessions. So they're all kind of structured similarly that way. On the live sessions, we try to take care of it on the professional day, so that if those are days people would be here already. Those are typically the full day, so that does take their whole day. So these first few this year, at least, we plan them for half the day. So they'll do that for half a day, and then they'll have the other half of the day to participate in whatever else is. We did also, the people who weren't during the literacy training last year did a book study, and we structured it in a way where if people wanted to do the book study independently, they could do that too. So they can still get in on some of those missed opportunities that way. So it will continue throughout this school year. So we have a letters cohort and a core cohort that are scheduled to be finished by May of '25, and then they'll be done. We'll still have our new staff members who are still working through that process, but that will be just a handful of people. So the bulk of people who are required to have that training completed will be done by the end of the school year.
And then I feel like I've asked this question before. Is there continuing education then after that, where there's certain like requirements after they're technically done with it moving forward?
So we are, we technically will have some literacy positions or people who have those responsibilities who are working through like coaching and helping supportive implementation and continuation of that. At this point, MBE doesn't have requirements for that for all of the teachers, but that will be kind of a part of our local plan of how we continue to support that and make sure it's not just training that they complete and it's done with, that it continues on into their daily, everyday work with students.
I would expect some upcoming REED Act 4.0, 5.0, whatever it ends up being, to have some sort of, when they get that far. I don't think their thinking is even that far ahead yet with everything, as they've extended the deadline for the first round of training for an extra year for districts who hadn't been in the same place we were. Speaking of professional days though, and working on, because when their teachers are not, during their work day, professional day, obviously, they're getting paid there at work that day, and then when they're working outside of their contract time, they're getting compensated. And this just speaks to Brooke's work that, you know, the legislation this last session indicated that we had to have an MOU with our teachers. What we were going to do with the extra for us ended up being about $68,000. They were given, they allocated to us per pupil just to compensate teachers for the REED Act training. And that's all you can use that particular bucket for. And many districts are struggling with how to, how to make that work, right? We had a chance to meet with our teachers in late July, and they said, don't we already have a system in place? Are we getting paid? Yes. Everyone has access to this? Yes. We can still get continuing ed credit and move lanes for the work you're doing? Yes. Well, can we just put that down and make it to the MOU? Yeah, and all that $68,000, which really doesn't go that far, that's going to pay us for our time in your general fund? Yes? Okay, great. So the negotiation committee will see that probably in the next couple of weeks. We're just making sure we take the time, you don't want to bother it in the middle of, middle of first week of school, but kind of get that going. So I think some of the work that Brooke has done to get this in is even helping us in that regard. One last thing to argue about, and our staff's working hard, doing great work, and I appreciate that very much.
I have a question. You are over responsible supervised TOSSAS, which are teachers on special assignments. Can you talk just a little bit about who they are and what they do?
Sure. So this year is Brenda Samrow and Andrew Hopkins. So Brenda Samrow kind of helps support the K6 level, and Andrew Hopkins does 712. And that's part of our MSU partnership as well. So they have a combination of some different training and responsibilities on the MSU side, and then they also obviously support in our district as well. And they help with placement, they do a ton. They help with placement of student teachers and different teacher candidates who are working through the education program at MSU. And so that's a variety of different placements from shorter term to the full-on student teaching. They also work with our first, second, and third-year teachers and provide extra professional development for them. So they help provide that throughout the year, and then they're just great coaches and support for all, really all staff, but those groups that I mentioned, the new teachers, and then the teacher candidates that come from MSU. They really help support them with whatever they need, which might be small and might be bigger in terms of the things that they're working through as they, as they work through earning their certification to become teachers.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thanks, Brooke.
Thank you.
Thank you. The TOSSAS were actually, I'm on the superintendent's, not just me, superintendent's on the governance board for that Minnesota Education Partnership with MSU. We meet monthly, and actually, our session this morning was with, TOSSAS joined us to have conversations around what we can do better as partners and what are we seeing in districts and everything with that. So Brenda and Andrew are really engaged in that role too. Great. All right, so the second thing on the agenda is just, I wanted to open the, to open the conversation to see what, what discussion, if any, we wanted to have really around, around the book that we looked at here the last few weeks. I appreciate, I realize we left it a little bit open-ended here a few weeks ago, and we just were trying to get through as fast as we could and see where we're at without any kind of pressure. The key, I would say the motivation for me as superintendent to bring it to you in the first place was really twofold. First was so that you have a sense of really feeling like you're in the loop and having an idea of what our administration and what our leadership is looking at. So we read this book as an administrative team this summer as well. I had probably, what'd you say, maybe a 30-minute conversation around kind of what it was? And that was about, really, what were our ahas from this read? Was there anything that really stuck out to us as, you know, I, I never thought of it that way. I haven't thought of that kind of thing that you think about. And then we also had some honest conversation around, you know, that sounds like a good thing, but that's pretty isolated in that little role. I don't know if that really would work in, in this life. What questions do we have, right? We had that conversation, but then we also just talked about what, if anything, would, does this mean to us as school leaders? I mean, is there anything we take away from this as a reflection? So it was really those three questions. It was really, you know, is there something that jumped out at you? Is there something, question it prompted, but didn't, I wouldn't use the word necessarily disagreed with, but just something you had questions on? And then, how does it impact you as a school leader? And our conversation was, was good for, like I said, we spent about 30 minutes talking about it, not more than that, and then we kind of moved on. And so that was the first part of my motivation for sharing it with you as school board members, was to kind of see what the administration was doing, but also just from the perspective of, if, if there's a position that gets the opportunity to talk with all of our community at various times, it has all their opinions, and everybody went to school. And so everyone has an opinion about what school should look like and what school might look like. And as role, as your school board member, part of your role is being that liaison to talk about what those people's perspectives are, but also share the district perspective with, with the community as well. Because there's, there's really only one group of people whose job it is in this town to really talk about, to advocate for the kids, and that's the school. That would be our administration, our teachers, and all of you as a school board. And so some of the ideas that the community might think, I wonder, well, the perspective that we provide as school board members and as school leaders helps that conversation going forward. So Dave, I don't necessarily have a, an activity planned for this, but from the perspective, I kind of want to open the floor maybe to you if you wanted to just see if, what did we think of the book? Did anything jump out at you? I don't intend to do a chapter study here or anything, but just, you know, what jumped out at you? What made, what made you think, and, and how might this perspective help us as a school board or as individuals? Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I think what I got out of it was, you know, you can, on any particular subject, you can talk with somebody else about that. You don't have to agree. You maybe don't even have to like what you hear, but you need to respect it. And you don't always have to have a conversation to change somebody else's mind. I mean, you'd like to, you'd, everybody wants everybody else to think more of their way, I think. But that isn't always the way it is. And so can you have a conversation with somebody else that's non-judgmental? Where you can listen to what they're saying, and hopefully they're listening to what you're saying. Again, you don't have to necessarily agree, but you can maybe agree to disagree, or maybe you do agree, but you can go away from the conversation with, well, you know, this is how they think about it, and I'm gonna keep thinking about that, and maybe I can learn something from it. I maybe won't totally change my perspective, but maybe they won't totally change us either, but that's okay. That's okay. So, little bit of rambling there, but that's kind of what I got out of it.
Other thoughts?
Yeah.
I don't think it was anything like groundbreaking or new, like nothing that we didn't all already know. But it just brings those things back, back to the surface to kind of remind you, and especially with this year being an election year and how polarized people are, it just, I don't know, I guess it was maybe just a good reminder on how to listen to other people and maybe not engage in the, some of that conversation that isn't like a healthy conversation.
And sometimes I think it can be challenging for us all, same thing for superintendent, to what's my role as a superintendent, what's my role as a community member, parent, guy with an opinion? And so as a school board members, that can be challenging at times. I would, because you all have your personal opinions, which you're perfectly welcome to speak on behalf of, but when you're speaking on behalf of the school, then what is your, how do you have to change that, or not change that, but be aware of that? It's a better way to put it, because you all have your own perspectives, which are very, you know, obviously what they are. But yeah, you're right, especially in an election year, because the school district's not a political place. And so we don't have, we don't have any role other than learning what's going on and helping everybody understand this is where, what life looks like, right?
Okay, others?
I had, I guess I'd say my, our one thing I pulled out of there that really stuck to me was, I think she had made a comment that, I might not quite say this right, people don't pick their opinions. People have life experiences that form that. So it kind of brought to the perspective to me that if someone has a different opinion about anything, and, and my first reaction is, what are they thinking, or it doesn't make sense? Instead, I need to understand what were their life experiences that led them to that point? What, what happened to them that brought them to that conclusion? Because that's probably what I don't understand. If I listen to that, A, I'm gonna then understand better where they're thinking, why they think that way, and it probably might make more sense as to what led them to that. So it's kind of a, a little bit more of a thing to say, listen a little bit more as opposed to make the quick judgment. So people don't pick that. They're led to that based on their experiences.
One other thing that just kind of stuck out with me in this book, which I already knew, but, and I know other people don't know this, but it surprises me how many other people don't realize the social media algorithms. And so when people surround themselves with, I forget what the term she used, where you surround yourself with people that are like you and have the same thought process as you, and then that's all you see on your Facebook feed or your Instagram feed is the same algorithm that surrounds you and your beliefs. And so you just assume this is the one and only way. Whereas, you know, 20, 30 years ago, you would read the newspaper and you would see the editorials, and it's not always your way. So that just, again, nothing new or groundbreaking that I didn't already know, but so many people just don't understand that. That, that's not what everybody else is seeing in their, their newsfeed, what you're seeing.
Part of build off that, how it can build anticipation on the people, you know? Part of the text messaging part, you know, or, or just, people get worked up off of it pretty easily, so.
Yeah, actually, I forget how to do it, because I haven't done it in a long time, but if you go into Facebook and you click into the settings and profile, if you go deep enough, Facebook will tell you your political leaning.
Yeah, I saw that once.
I know it. So, interesting.
I mean, I know somebody that, they're, they're one way, but their algorithm got way off, and it was totally feeding them the other, and they're like, what is going on here? So, yes.
Dita, anything?
Just what was said, just sometimes it's better to listen than talk.
Yeah, Charlie?
I think the thing that jumped out at me is when I was, I thought it was interesting when they brought the, the two different rural area, brought the city folks to the rural area. I thought that was the interesting part. And how people who are on opposite sides of the political divide, you put them together and had them start asking each other questions, and they just got totally wound up in it. And, and, and it was something that, I don't think, I don't think any of the folks that were in that really understood what, what was happening, you know? They were, they were listening to the other side and the other side. And a lot of what the book is talking about is, you know, what, is what I, I did in my years of selling products, you know? Sales training and things like that, because we were taught as salespeople to be good listeners, ask a lot of questions. I have a good friend that lives in Fairville who's a master at asking questions, you know? And one of the things that came up in my, in my experience was, I don't know if you've ever heard of a guy named Zig Ziglar? You know, he said, never, never tell anybody something that you could ask them, you know? And it's how you, you know, and how you, how you, how you form your questions to people, you know? So, so, but, yeah, I can, you know, it's, it's an interesting read. And I didn't, I didn't get all the way to the end of it, but what I did get is it's an interesting read, and, and I guess I never thought of it that way.
I think Alyssa kind of mentioned it a little bit earlier, but just to kind of, as we wrap up kind of our thoughts. So as a school board member, you know, how does it impact you? Is it just kind of the listening, kind of just giving everybody the same level of respect and perspective? What do you think? Does it, does it change? I don't, I don't know that it, based on what I just heard, it changes anything any of you all do, because you all do a pretty nice job of that already. But what is it, what, how does it apply to school board leadership, or doesn't it?
Well, I can give you a little bit of refreshing, or refresh on understanding of the different people in the community that do come to you and what, like, you know, Grant comes back to, I guess I understand knowing a little bit of your history of why you're, you gotta be pointed that way. But, oh definitely, I mean, whether they got kids in our school or not, but they're a taxpayer to the community, or, you know, just of, just understanding them, you know?
Respect for the differences.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Yeah.
Couple of years ago, we did some work as a leadership team about partnership leadership with our admin team. And one of the things we talked about was that you can't always expect reciprocation on that. And so you can be a good listener, and you can be respectful, and you can really work hard to understand the other person's perspective. But if your expectation going in is that they'll give you the same level of, of respect and perspective, then you might be disappointed more than you think. And so it can be a, a one-way street at times, and so you just have to think about what can I, what's in my control? You know, that was Sandra Campoff's message to us a few years ago was, control the controllables, right? Which is what you, your behavior looks like, and that was just the perspective of it. And I've been, you know, I, I do read a lot, and I just thought this was one that was interesting for us to, to, and that was really all my entire intent was sharing it, and hopefully it was valuable and worth your time.
Okay. You good?
I'm good. If you have anything else, go ahead.
All right.
All right. So a last agenda item here then for tonight is, pardon me, is kind of a hodgepodge in terms of just a summary of many of the school year beginning updates as we get going here. And it's just some of the updates that are, went smooth and some things that didn't, but just kind of acknowledging where we are as we head into the fall here. Our enrollment these first few days is looking encouraging, and that's the word that Matt and I use a couple of times, encouraging with caution, because you always know that it does bite before it goes back down. And the reason for that is because there are students who may not have showed up yesterday or today who we don't actually have their request for records yet that they're anywhere else. So they might still be on our books and just marked absent, so we might not know they're gone yet. And by the first of October, that's why they use that date as the official date, because then you get to that 10-day drop period. We know those students are not going to be attending with us. But initially, we're looking very, very positive. We had to add, we had to add a section of fifth grade at the intermediate school as we had students coming over, some from Sacred Heart, but just into the community as well. So the intermediate school is up quite a bit right now in terms, overall, if I were to take today's snapshot number, we're well over 1,700, about 1,720, which is, which is a high, I think we budgeted for 1,690 if I remember correctly.
Yeah, 1,685.
Something right around there. We ended last year in about that 1,680 range, if I remember correctly. And so we, this is, this is optimistic, but we will see where it lands, because we just know that there's still going to be some, some play with that over the first few weeks. But, but we did have a lot of students coming in. I've seen more ins than outs in the last few weeks. It's come across my desk. So, so that's positive from that perspective. Not any increase in open enrollment, not any of that that I've seen. It's staying pretty steady for that. That's, that's positive. As far as the first week of school went, as far as workshop week and anything, I would say, I mean, as smooth as any year when it comes to that. I think we don't have anything that was overly, overly negative to report, although we have staff who was. We had some calendar issues, talked about that on the phone the other day. We, I think, finally got that link taken down this, this week. But long story short, we didn't, everybody's in school and we got going from there. But, and we've improved some of our processes with how we do the, the event reporting and things like. things like that. We got to some answers based on, actually, based on our conversation on the other day. But we got, we got that going on here. We had Chromebooks, kids have Chromebooks. The distribution was a little bit of a, a challenge this year in terms of getting everybody their devices and getting things recorded. It just took a long time. That's what it did. It was, there wasn't any challenge with it. It just took a long time. But we've got some systems in place for that. And then, of course, the first few days, transportation is always a, buses are late, and we got to get used to timing and those sorts of things. But that's just how it goes everywhere. But a lot of positive things too, is I was out in the buildings the last few days. It's great to see the kids. And, and I think overall, it's just always a very positive and, and refreshing time. And the kids won't tell you that, that they're excited to be back to school, but their body language and their excitement when they're in the buildings really tells you that they're happy to be there. And it's been really positive so far. Staffing continues to be something that we are, the first few weeks of school is always, you kind of leave a little bit of that wiggle room in there to see what do you need if you can. And so you might have just seen a social worker posting go out today. We had just a few extra students move in, just in the last, literally Thursday, Friday, Tuesday, that had some pretty significant needs. And so we've had to add some support. We also had to do a, you'll see in the September board meeting, you'll see a, a contract for American Sign Language Interpreting coming over across too. So we have a student with that level of need. And we're happy to, but we're also required to, you know, provide those services, which is just something we have to adjust to with the end of the day. With the increase in classes, with students coming into WIS, we fortunately were able to absorb at, in fourth and sixth grade. With fifth grade, we were not able to absorb quite as many. So we moved an intervention teacher into the classroom. And so we're able to, without any adding any FTE, increase an additional class for fifth grade. So that was, that's a positive thing in terms of more students coming in. The other staffing thing that that we talked about, I think, in one of the most recent updates. But we did have a couple of positions that we just, at the end of the summer, weren't there. One was a CTE position, so we had to rearrange some schedules there for that. Still working with some of those seniors to try to provide some opportunities this school year for some of those things that don't run, maybe PSEO or those kind of things. But then also, it was, and this is just how, how things go, sometimes we did have a sixth grade hire. So if you remember correct, if you remember, we had a, we had a high school associate teacher take a leadership position in the other, another district. So then Seth Anderson moved up to teach at the junior high, which will be a good fit for him, leaving a sixth grade opening later in the summer, which we had a candidate who had filled the position and then called us last week before and said, I guess, I guess I'm not coming. Sorry. And so we, we fortunately had another intervention teacher after much, much work. So Jana Castile and Stacy, Stacy Collins, yes, are both going to be in classrooms to start the school year. And then if we're able to hire teachers, we'll backfill those intervention teachers if and when we're able to with that. Yes, for that. So other than that, though, we're, kids are going and we're off and running for that. Ongoing projects, we're continuing to work on. You know, I just talked to Nikki today, continuing to explore what childcare could look like. We're finding that the licensing process and our space that we have until Southwest Metro makes a move, quite frankly, we're probably not going to have a space that's going to meet the requirements without significant renovation, which if Southwest Metro is going to move, which they're still looking to do sometime this school year, we hope, there's no, wouldn't be a reason to start that or to do significant renovation to like a, an old classroom or a locker room with that. And, you know, we still have some, we still need to know what that's going to look like. We don't necessarily know that we have the processes or the staff or anything in place to do that. So it's, it's an ongoing conversation that doesn't happen overnight, and we're working through that. Just conversation to the last few days, and actually just came up before our meeting today or early in the meeting. Our camera systems and our fob systems are, are nearing the end of their life. So we're starting to explore what that looks like to do something different. Seems to be a lot of ones and twos that just don't seem to be working right. And so we're trying to determine what the next step is there for that. But it's just something that we're on the plan with right now. Director of Business Services, you're aware of that. We're looking, we have that position posted right now. As much as I am not a fan of New Home right now, I'm happy for you and your next, and your next venture. But we will, we're in good shape for the preliminary levy here this month. And then the audit, we have a plan to cover our audit field work. So we'll be in good shape for that. We have had a couple of candidates reach out, and a couple actually have already completed files. And so I'll be looking at probably the beginning of next week, start setting up interviews for that process, which that is the one position, other than the superintendent, that historically we have included the treasurer of the board as in the final interview for, simply because that, that is the one director position that works so closely with board members. And we'll just see what availability looks like and what our candidate pool. And, but my intent would be to do that again if it fits, you know, your schedule. If you can't, then another board member would be obviously invited and welcome for that process. And then the last thing I wanted to highlight tonight is more of a just, if you want to take one and pass it around on both of these, just a reminder that in our last, it was our last work session, we talked a little bit about the board three-year governance plan. We talked about the board goals. And then the evaluation committee had a chance to meet late July, early August. I don't recall exactly when our last meeting exactly was. But we worked out some of these drafts for these two documents. And, you know, the first being the three-year governance plan, and we, that would be 24, 25 through 26, 27. And you can see most of that is governance over to the right, kind of moving from column to column, with some things that are specific being, think about operating budget needs in certain years, school board elections in certain years, facility things are in certain years, working on 100 year celebration this year, which I've got some ideas we'll be talking about here in the, later this fall for Central. Go on with that. So that's the governance plan for you to look at. And then the goals would be the discussion we had about specific annual focus areas within that governance plan. And when the evaluation committee kind of talked about what those could look like. And that's listed for you there, as I was able to wordsmith some of what we put together for the, for the thoughts. The intent tonight is, is to hand those to you, because you've had a chance to visit with that, talk about that last time. Here's what the committee has come out of it with, based on what my feedback was. And so now you have a couple of weeks to take a look at these. And then at the September regular meeting, you'd have the opportunity to approve these goals for yourself and the three-year work plan, or provide feedback and we'll change them. And so I, we certainly have time to discuss it tonight, but that wasn't necessarily my intention, other than just to give them to you again. So we did spend quite a bit of time in our last work session, talking about this.
Okay.
And that was kind of just the, you know, the basket of, of good things going on to start the school year that I wanted to share for this evening. We've got a lot of activities going on, and the weather's been nice to start the school year. So it's been fun to see. We do have two, and I only because I met one of their parents today. So I had a chance to talk about this. We have two interns working with our athletic trainers. So we've got three individuals who are on our training staff this fall, which is kind of an exciting addition to us with the Mayo Clinic. So it's been a good start to the school year. Get into it. Questions, thoughts? Anything else?
I have one question, going back to, just, just like, understanding, so like, when you had like a fifth grade class or any other class that we don't have here before, sounds like that takes up a classroom then to do that. I mean, is there, what do we do there? Is it like, we have, we obviously didn't add a classroom on, but
Right.
Do we lose other opportunity that, you know, or what, what happens there?
Yeah. So in, in most cases, in this case, we were able to absorb that because we were planning to reduce a section. And so the classroom was there, and all the materials were there, and we had it. What we do miss now is we do miss the intervention staff, because the intervention staff is going to go in the classroom. And so we have to provide those interventions a different way. We didn't change our overall FTE, which is why it doesn't become a budget conversation around us. If we're going to add, add staff that changes our FTE, that's sometimes a bigger conversation with what here's our, what our budget change is going to be. That's not the case here. Our, fortunately, our buildings have enough space and other, it might mean a couple of teachers are sharing an office if we need that extra classroom for something that way. But it, in this, in this situation, it really would have been just a straight add, except we couldn't find somebody. And we have, just the reality of it is, we've gone down a section in almost every grade level over the last several years. And so we have materials and things like that for
Kind of falls back to the study of our building usage.
Correct. Yeah.
Any other questions, Eric? Remind Matt we haven't approved his resignation yet, so keep that in mind.
Sure.
New Home's getting a good man. All right. Well, nothing else?
Good tonight.
We'll call the meeting adjourned. And our next meeting is in two weeks, the 19th.